So it's we're a little over time, but we're going to call this meeting of the Wintonwood City School. Work session to order and we do have on here for Mr. Seymour to call the role. So would you do that, please?
Sure. Mr. McGowan?
Present.
Mrs. Ruggles?
You're on mute.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Present. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Birdy?
Present.
Dr. Coupalletti?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present. To get started today, board, I didn't get any specific topics from you except for what was already listed. So that's what we're going to go through. It is in Board Docs. I also sent you out the, the agenda that is normally sent out from the Board President. So you should have that for, for your review. So the first item that I have on the agenda to be discussed would be Mr. Seymour's Treasurer's Report. So, Mr. Seymour, you do have the floor at this time.
Okay, the only thing under the Treasurer's Report is under the Administrative Content. I sent you the, the end of the year quarterly report for the fourth quarter. And the general fund was only up 115,000 from the prior year. And of course, a lot of the savings, as you would anticipate, were under supplies and materials and purchase services because of the closure of schools. We, even though we did remote instruction, we did pay money on a lot of supplies, materials, and purchase services. A lot of the purchase service savings was through our subs. We saved approximately $150,000 in substitute. And then, of course, you could see capital outlays down. We did not buy any buses. So you can see how the salaries benefits compared to the year before and all the other accounts. And then on the bottom, you can see how we compared from last year to this year by, by instruction and support services, business, transportation. Most of the things that are down is what you would anticipate with school closures, operational plant and pupil transportation. I don't know if you have any questions, but that, that's the fourth quarterly.
Transportation didn't change that much, Mr. Seymour. Well, let me see. Am I looking at this right? Let me look at it again. I'm sorry. Transportation, I'm looking at the graph that you gave us.
Yeah.
It didn't change a whole lot. Shouldn't it have, since we did work, or how, how does that cost stay about the same?
Well, the, the savings part would have been contracted bus services. We still paid the personnel. We still had their benefits. But the savings would have been purchased transportation services, fuel and things like that.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
We saved around $25,000 in, in fuel for transportation. And then, you know, CTS, our contracted handicap transportation, we saved $10 there too.
Say that amount again, Mr. Seymour.
UTS, you know, our UTS service. We saved about 50,000 there.
Okay.
Mr. Seymour, do you anticipate any budget impact on transportation coming for the fall? Whatever our plans will be because of the social distancing that needs to occur? You know, will there be more routes, more, you know, will, will there be an anticipated increase in the budget as we try to transport children safely through social distancing measures?
A lot of that will depend upon your educational plan. You know, are you going to bring all students in? Are you going to bring part of them in? A lot of that will depend on your transportation plan and social distancing.
Okay, so just into this, Mr. Seymour, help us along the way to recovering or balancing out the, the money that we lost from the state?
I wouldn't say this helped us out with the, the cuts from the state. Just today, we found out that we're starting the new year and we're going to, so far, they're going to maintain the student success and wellness funds. For a while, they were fearful that that would be cut. We also know that for the first payment, we got cut another 551,000 for this year. So that's why I might have the appropriations in August and the five-year forecast in September. Once they solidify the state econ, when they, they, they really can't, we can't really solidify the education, the 12 finances until the state can get a better handle on theirs. So I may delay the approval of the five-year forecast because all eyes are on it of our employee groups because of our, our freeze on wages. And since we asked for the raises back. So I want to try to make it as accurate as we can with what we do know at the time. Does that help answer?
When do you think, when do you expect for us to see it?
Probably it's due October 1st.
Right, but you said you're planning on trying to.
Right, most Treasurers are delaying it as long as they can. And I anticipate they're going to give us an extension on it if they haven't solidified the state, the state budget. They can't, you know, K-12 is a big chunk of the state budget. So they will have to get a handle on the state budget. And we don't really have any more concrete knowledge of cuts right now except that they maintain the cuts from last year into this year. And we don't know what will happen if the economy shuts down again. You know, we're at a red level and it could be, so it's really unknown right now.
All right, does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Seymour with regards to this fourth quarter report? Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour, for that explanation of those, of that fourth quarter report. The next item.
Can I share one other? As you know, we got federal stimulus dollars. And right now, Mr. Smith and I are using the federal stimulus dollars all for remote learning and personal protective equipment. So I cannot drive up our, so that we don't drive up our general fund or signatures for COVID issues.
I guess we'd like to be able to talk a little bit about the personal protection. Mr. Smith, you talk about the, the opening plan. You're going to talk about that with us a little bit? Okay, so I have some questions about that. So I'll just hold those until you go over your, your thing. So one other question I have, and I don't know whether this is for Mr. Seymour or Mr. Smith. We had discussed the CARES Act and getting some of the dollars from the CARES Act. And have we already received those one? And if so, have we allocated those and how did we allocate them?
That's basically what I was just referring to.
All the federal stimulus, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, we are using those. We issued a purchase order yesterday, Friday, for almost $500,000 worth of Chromebooks. We're using it all currently for remote learning and personal PPE equipment.
Okay. All right.
We're trying.
That was a different dollar. I thought, I was hoping that the stimulus dollar that you were talking about was a different pool of money, but.
No, they call it. You'll also hear it referred to as elementary and secondary emergency relief funds.
Okay.
That's what they're basically calling it from the state of Ohio. ESFRF, second, elementary and secondary schools, emergency relief. And we received approximately 1.1 million and our private schools received approximately 100,000. But we're going to try to use that over the next two years for distance learning.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Seymour.
We're trying to keep the COVID issues being funded, not through general fund, if that makes sense.
Yes. And not use general fund.
Yeah, Dr. Johnson, Superintendent and Treasurers across the state made some real strong recommendations to legislators. And they mentioned that COVID is not something that we normally have to deal with in, in our process. And so they have to give us some relief funds that we don't take from general fund. And this is every district, and that's why they made the adjustments. And that's why some of the money is, it's not like funds that have a four and five-year window to them. They're actually short because they're anticipating that one day there's a vaccine for COVID and it, and it does what it does. And so they did not want us to just be anticipating that the COVID funds forever. So, but this stops it from leaving our general fund, which was really our pride to the lawmakers in, in Ohio.
Okay, that, that's good. Did anybody else again have any other questions regarding any of that? Okay, once again, thank you, Mr. Seymour, for that very thorough explanation. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. And you have two items there, Mr. Smith.
Dr. Johnson, do you mind me flipping these and talking about the Native American mascot first?
That's fine. That's what I was going to say. Use your time how you want. Absolutely.
So there is a press release that's going to go out once we get quotes from board members, and I hope every board member participates. But the press release kind of starts this way. For years, Wintonwood City Schools has been intentionally planning the retirement of the Native American Warrior Head logo and paraphernalia from all marketing and communications publicity. The district's former mascot was created in 1992 when Green Hills High School and Forest Park High School merged to become Wintonwoods High School. Superintendent Anthony Smith states, "With such a diverse student population and over 32 spoken languages, it is a priority and imperative that we continue to create a safe and inclusive environment for all of our students and families." So during the process, we searched all of the schools and advertisements for the Native American Warrior Head and paraphernalia. They made their transition. So it was our plan to retire the Native American mascot, the Native American Chief Mascot, excuse me. And there is no portion of the logo that's in our new buildings on those campuses. There are some things that have been modified along the way in some of our older buildings that we're currently using. But we have been working on this transition for several years just to make sure that we were respectful to Native Americans, of course, but also other, you know, nationalities that are part of our district and who we are. I think just from my position as the Superintendent, I think it's time for us to retire them, that mascot. And we have several different logos that we use, and we have been using those for several years. And I think the community and the public respects what we're trying to do, at least from, from my.
Okay, I, I think I had sent something out to the board, you know, kind of on that same line. So did I understand you to say just at the beginning that you wanted each board member to have?
Well, if, yeah, if Drew, if Drew Jackson comes to you for a quote, I mean, give her something so that it's more than just a board's vote, yea or nay. It's just your own feeling about how this subject is really a sensitive issue and how the board is, is, is kind of becoming a united front about how we respect other people in our, in our community.
Yes, she, I got an email from her today, I think, asking for that. And I wanted to wait until we had our meeting tonight before I replied to her because I wanted to make sure that we were all on board and on the same page. Because I'm not ask everybody how they felt about the, the logo. But I know that as I've been on this board now for, this is my seventh year, I guess. And for, I will say at least for the last four and a half, five of those years, this has been a topic of discussion. And we have, we have discussed back and forth about, you know, the logo and what it would look like. And when we decided we were going to go into new buildings, we did talk about what we were taking into the new buildings. And we talked about, you know, coming up with the exact color, you know, the green number, whatever, the blue number, whatever. So that everything was, you know, uniformed as our logo was moving forward. And I believe somebody even used Princeton as a example to us because they had some write-up in our article in the newspaper about it at that time. But this has been something that's been on our radar for a long time. You know, it, it, it has resurfaced in this way. But I would like to hear from my board colleagues on their feeling about it. Because what we don't want to happen is for us to go out and think we have a united front, and we really don't. If somebody really feels very strongly about continuing with the, the Warrior Head logo, then we should maybe talk about that at this time. I know that we, we have been moving away from it. There's no, if you look at any communication that has come from the central office, it, it may have had the W with the, with the spear through it, but it didn't have old signs, old uniforms, things like that. You know, they still have it. And, but that was because those were purchased prior to when we got, you know, to talking about this, say, four and a half years ago. So, Board colleagues, could we hear how each one of you feel about it?
So I, I sent my quote to Drew this morning. And it's 67 words. I'll give you the last few words. It is time that we make a change.
Thank you.
Um, I, I know I sent an email to you, Dr. Johnson, and also Mr. Smith a couple of weeks ago. Somebody had reached out to me via email about it. And obviously, I think the Warrior Head needs to be retired, should have been retired. I'm happy that we're moving away from it. But I was even thinking about the Warrior's name in, in my mind. And initially, I'm thinking that had some Native American pieces to it. But then I talked to my wife and she says, well, where do I get that from? And she didn't think that was the case. It's not like the Redskins, which are, thank God, they're finally doing the right thing in DC and retiring that. So the Warrior name, yeah, me personally, I think of a Warrior as a Native American fighter or something like that. But I don't think everybody necessarily feels that way. So I'm okay with the Warrior's name, but absolutely the Warrior Head should be retired.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGowan.
And, and also I did get an email from, from Drew also, but like you, I wanted to wait until after the meeting. So I'll respond back to her tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Birdy?
Yeah, no, I agree. I, I think the Warrior Head, the Indian, that, that needs, I'm happy that the decision was made a while ago, but that's been stopped as far as being used. I, I had the same initial thought that Mr. McGowan's had as far as the word Warrior. And I actually went and looked up the definition of Warrior. And it's not really, it's not tied to just Native American. So I'm, I'm not sure that I have an issue with, with continuing with the Warrior, you know, Wintonwoods Warriors. I was actually watching something on ESPN and you think about the Golden State Warriors. And, you know, their logo is not, it's not an Indian or anything. It's actually a picture, I believe, a drawing of like the Golden Gate Bridge. So I, I think we can find a way to continue to use the Wintonwoods Warriors without, without using the Indian in the headdress logo. So I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy that we're moving away from that.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. And Mrs. Ruggles?
Obviously, I definitely think we should move away from the Native American head, especially given the fact that these are individuals who have been oppressed. And I also did not, it's funny, the NAACP reached out about that. And when I started thinking about Warrior, I didn't think the word Warrior was a bad connotation. But I think it's important to make sure to see how individuals who we often use that word to describe how they feel about it, how it's seen with those individuals. Because I do think about Wintonwoods as Warriors because it's, it, it, the definition talks about a fighting spirit. We have definitely, we're fighting against a lot of, you know, the past and how we might be perceived as a district, and we are overcomers. And so I think of it as that Warrior spirit. I think about when, you know, I first came to the district. And, you know, I see how our students are doing really well in some areas, areas, and how other students are coming up. So I think the name Warrior resonates with me, but I don't know how it resonates with Native Americans. So I think it's worth looking at. I don't think it's an issue to Mr. Birdy's point. The Golden State Warriors, it all depends on how you depict that logo. Do we need to look at the spears that go along with it? Do we need to, you know, that, that continues to connect it to Native Americans? So I just think it's going to, we really need to continue to work that we've been doing. I remember, you know, that this is something that has been in the, in the works. And I'm glad to see that what's happening in our society has made it important that we move ahead faster. I know that we, you know, I, I went through and I looked at my things. I didn't have anything on, in, in my Wintonwoods clothing except something that was from way back when, when Imani was here and it had a Warrior. It had the Native American head on it, but nothing moving forward had it. So kudos to Mr. Smith and his team because I know that that's something that we had talked about. I believe it was myself, Dr. Johnson, and Mr. Birdy were at least part of that conversation when we were talking about unifying our brand. And the Warrior Head was not a part of that conversation.
If, if, if I can just add something also, well, two things. One, I, I think I finally figured out why I, you know, equated Warriors to Native Americans because it's funny, the Little League baseball and football team I played on when I was 12 were the Western AA Warriors. And we actually had a Warrior Head and all that stuff. So that's probably why I initially thought that. But if there is, I mean, one, retiring the Native American Head, obviously. But I think if there is a sphere involved, that that needs to go also. Because I think that's going to also equate to, you know, Native Americans. So I don't know if now we have to spend money for a new logo or whatever, but getting rid of both of those, I think, is important. And lastly, I know there was something going on in the city of Cincinnati recently. And there was a Native American guy that was interviewed multiple times. That's a head of, I don't know if the Greater Cincinnati Native American Society or something like that. But it might behoove us to maybe reach out to him and get his feedback.
Yeah, and also, you know, as we were talking about earlier before, we kind of, you know, spoke about Krogers, Myers, Walmart, those companies that sell T-shirts with the Warrior Head on. And I know Mr. Smith has addressed that, his plan to address those individuals. We also need to think about, and I don't know this, but I know there's little Warrior football teams and, and different, you know, what other things are associated with our district that uses the name Warriors and might use a logo of a Native American logo so that we can try and partner with them and, and find a solution to, an equitable solution to that issue.
Ms. Ruggles, in a response to you and Mr. McGowan's point, if you look up the word Warrior, it, it only just means brave and experienced.
Yes, yes.
It doesn't mean anything. And I think that we have, we, we were very, very diligent about the spear. And the spear is actually in a position of going down, which that is also a representation of ending a battle or, you know, having a level of peace between whoever you're dealing with. So I am really inclined of keeping the spear and having it go through the WW that we've already been endorsing. However, it's the board's appetite of how they feel. And as far as the Warriors Head, the, the logo of the Native American, it tells you not to even use human characters in logos and things like that because you will offend someone. So we've done some, we've had some conversations with people in the community about the spear. And they say, the spear doesn't bother me. It's the, the idea of the Native American Head. And because we've been using the WW and the spear for at least six, maybe seven years. Remember, guys, we actually have three logos and we use them interchangeably based on what our conversation is. We have the New Tech one that Mr. McGowan is wearing tonight. We also have the WW, which speaks volume about our educational program. Then we also have the one that is the logo that's part of our athletic program. The other part, the other, the other part of that is we have to be very, very mindful of, you know, there are several pieces, and I don't want us to get lost in the conversation. We're trying to retire one, but we're also trying to keep pride in our community. And Warrior Pride is, I think Mrs. Ruggles hit the nail on the head. It's not about war. It's about coming back, being, coming back through adversity, still being strong, still being vigilant and never giving up the fight. So that's part of who we, that, I think that's the, the message that we like to give to, to our community. Right now, we're fighting COVID. I mean, we're warriors fighting COVID. And to just kind of keep moving in that direction because I think it gives our kids a spirit and a sense of hope about what we do. As far as the Native American Indian is concerned, we are actually removing that from every platform that we have from inside the school and outside as quickly as we can. So.
Oh, you go ahead, Dr. Coupalletti.
So in researching my answer to the question I received this morning, I went to the National Congress of American Indians, which has been in place since 1968. And they have very strong advice. And it comes from the point of view, my answer comes from the point of view of saying, what does the person who is being offended feel? Now, I've heard everyone's argument about the use of Warrior. I believe that you may actually still be offending the Native American. I believe that you may actually still be offending the Native Americans. And there is harm associated with it, with our youth, with Native American youth. So I can't tell you what to think, but I wonder, just as you would not want a white person telling an African American to chill when you get called a name, you would rather ask the African American, how do you feel about that name? And I have the point of view, that is apparently the only one, that I would like for you to consider and even maybe ask the National Congress of whether they feel the word warrior is derogatory, demeaning and capable of causing harm to our Native American youth. And because I'm not, I'm not smart enough to tell you, um, there is a website and they do discuss the, uh, negatives of associating Native Americans with war. And so I, I have to ask you either to look at what I looked at, look in your heart, or go to the people who've been fighting this for, since 1968 and ask them what they think, because I think you're off a little bit by saying warrior is okay. Okay? So that's my point.
Well, I, I do have to say, and I'm not sure about other people that are in this room or are part of this broadcast, but I might be the only person on this team that is actually Native American and African American. And warrior does not offend me personally. It does not.
Well, I, to your point, um, Dr. Kupuletti, I, I think I, I did say that, um, making sure that we don't unintentionally, um, offend somebody with the spear. But if you, if we have removed the warrior head from everything, how does the word, you said, if you associate warrior with war, but if there's no warrior head or anything, there, I mean, how are we associating warrior with a Native American?
So there is a longstanding tradition of associating of American, um, Indians with the, with the brave, with the soldier, with, and so when it says warrior, it means something to a lot of people's minds. And that association, according to everything I've read, can be offensive to Native Americans. Now, again, I can't, I can't tell you, but if someone tells me something that I find offensive and they say, well, I don't mean to offend you, I still find it offensive. And I think probably everyone on this board can understand that statement. And if what I read from the NCAI was that the use of words like that is offensive. So that's the best I can do, uh, to give my point of view.
And, and, and just to chime in on that, um, my dad had a, a great saying and he said, your perception is your reality. So like Dr. Kupuletti said, I think we need to at least reach out to some Native American group and find out whether or not they feel that it's offensive. And I couldn't care less if we only have five Native Americans in the entire Wenton Woods School District. If it's offensive to them, then I think that's an issue.
Well, I guess my, um, my question would be, um, as much as we all feel like, um, it's time for a change, uh, what that change really looks like? And if we're not premature in giving, um, in giving Drew a statement, it seeing as how we haven't decided exactly, and that's the reason why I wanted to hear from everybody. From my perspective, and I do agree with you, Dr. Kupuletti, and also, uh, Mr. McGowan's, um, uh, that, there was a saying that I learnt, hate to say my mama said, but the saying that, and it just keeps coming up. I can't help it. But there was a saying that nothing should be done about us without us. So, um, having said that, I agree that maybe we could take, I mean, take a step back and have a conversation. Cause my knee jerk reaction was we've already began to phase this out anyway, but not the word warrior, because we were looking at the word warrior as the person who, uh, doesn't ever give up, who is a fighter, who sticks to it, who, you know, um, but in, in the midst of having, you know, being willing to make the change anyway, um, maybe we should take a step back and say, um, let's talk to, say, this National Congress of American, uh, Indians and, um, you know, do some more research and maybe there's another word. Before we were warriors, we were chargers. You know what I'm saying? We were, you know, so we had other, um, other logos or, or, you know, mascots or whatever that we had. So I just, uh, I mean, the reason I, I said, let's take a step back before we send our quotes to Drew, because I don't want to send out all these mixed messages from our board that we're not a united front. I feel like we are, but what, to what degree? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Doc, I have a question. What, and, and there are people who have a, um, a much better solid history of, of, uh, Green Hills than I do, but what is, what is a charger?
Gino, you're muted.
Right. I was gonna say, keep in mind, you've got two different ones. It was the Forest Park Chargers and it was the Green Hill Pioneers. So you've got two logos. And then when I was thinking about this, I was thinking, how do you combine those two? Which I think would be kind of cool, um, that you were the Forest Park Chargers and the Green Hill Pioneers. And how do you combine maybe those two, if in fact you wanted to change it?
Okay. So I just need to go with a quick history lesson. The pioneers oppressed Native Americans. So how is that a fitting combination? Pioneers were not the oppressed people. So the reason we're in this conversation is we're talking about an oppressed group of people. Based on the information that Dr. Kupuletti quoted for the, uh, from, from his research, Native Americans weren't oppressed people. Pioneers were not.
But I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, how do you equate that the pioneers oppressed the, the, the Native Americans? So you saying the only pioneers were the ones that came over here from England? I mean, I mean from Europe?
Not at all, not at all. I'm not saying that, but what I am saying is, how did the land get to be where, where it is? And how did America get to be what it is? They, there were people here before the pioneers arrived. They were Native Americans.
So I'm saying that it is, you know, it is the depiction, you know, and some of the stuff that I've read, it would, it's the depiction of Native Americans as being warriors. And that's where, where I think it's important to have, um, that conversation. I think, you know, just, you know, to, to be clear. But if I walked, if, if the Native American name was never associated with Wenton Woods and we were just the Wenton Woods Warriors, I have to, you know, I have to ask myself, would it be offensive? But because we've had the history of having that, so how, you know, just because we, we removed it, how does that, that lay with Native Americans? I mean, with the spear, I mean, shoot, they saw black people spear chuckers, you know? I mean, our, is, does that, are we warriors? Because, uh, is that offensive to black people? Because it's got a spear and the majority of the people that go to Wenton Woods are black people? Are they gonna be the spear chucking warriors? I'm, I'm just being real. So.
Very good point. I think he makes a very good point, Ms. Ruggles. I think the point that, uh, has already been put on the table. We need to talk to people who it might offend, uh, to get their reaction. Moving the warrior head, is that enough? Moving the word warriors, does that make it enough? Moving the spear, does that make it enough? Because I think there are several different conversations on the table right now. Which one makes it enough to not offend people, uh, to make sure that we are a balanced society?
So I just, I just found an, um, a resolution that the NACI made in November 2001. The resolution, resolution urged that the name Fighting Sioux's and the logo are stereotypical symbols that create an environment in which degrading acts become more acceptable and promote practices that trivialize and demean, native, demean Native American culture, traditions and spirituality. So they actually made a resolution against just the name. And, uh, so I, as I said, I'm not an expert here and I, I don't have, I don't, I haven't had time to completely explore everything, but the use of names is also considered demeaning and trivializing. So be careful where we step, I think, is my advice.
Yes, sir. Dr. Kupuletti, I did hear you mention names, but in what you're reading, I didn't hear warrior. So can you read that again, please?
Okay. This, this had to do with, uh, imagery and names associated with UND, which I don't know what that is. Okay. The resolution urged that the name Fighting Sioux's and the logo are stereotypical symbols that create an environment in which degrading acts become more acceptable and promote practices that trivialize and demean Native American culture, traditions and spirituality. Uh, so it, uh, I, I, I think we don't know enough, but we could reach out to them and ask them, or I could spend more time reading their websites and their lawsuits.
And I do, and I do understand the Fighting Sioux, Sioux is a particular type of Native American.
Right.
Right.
The fighting part, I think that's the issue.
It's connecting it with fighting and war with a particular identifiable it, um, Native American group.
Like fighting Apaches or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, Sioux, Arapaho, all of them, if you use any of those names, they're all in the same Apache. They're all in the same, uh, vein, because those are particular Native American tribes of people.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think we're saying the same thing. I think everybody has kind of touched on making sure that we, um, you know, consult or at least talk to people that this may be, uh, this is affecting. Um, however, I do believe if we, we have to remove the warrior head, the, I mean, the Native American head, because when you have the Native American head and you couple it with warrior spear, that, that sets a whole different tone, um, up for, um, Native Americans. So.
So I did find one, one other statement that I can read to you. The warrior savage myth has plagued this country's relationship with the Indian people as it reinforces the racist view that Indians are uncivilized and uneducated. And it has been used to justify policies of forced assimilation and destruction of the Indian culture. So I think that comes pretty close to being offensive.
I think you could work diligently to find whatever you want to find to make it what it is. However, I think the thing that I'd like to add is, um, we've been sending out surveys on a, on a variety of things. And I would welcome the board to, uh, join with the superintendent. And let's create a survey for people and ask them about the process that we're making. I do agree with Ms. Ruggles' point, the, uh, Indian head is staring us in the face because that is a caricature of a real person. And I think that one is very, very obvious about what we're talking about. But in order for us to go deeper, um, we should, I would like for us to consider through a community engagement effort, is to create a survey and ask people about how they feel. And then we would be getting a, um, a cross section from the community and not making assumptions about what we think as opposed to what they tell us.
I, I agree totally. And I think you need to include also the spear part in there in whatever survey we have, because I've got an issue with the spear.
I, I, okay. I, I, I totally agree. I think we should create a survey. And, uh, instead of, uh, the small assignment that you had where you were going to give feedback, and I agree with Dr. Johnson, we're in a variety of places here. I would like to see us, uh, where you guys send in questions that you would like to be part of the survey. And then we would let the entire board see the survey before we pushed it out to the public to see if you are in agreement with all the questions that we're asking, including the spear, Mr. McGowan, or anything else that we may find offensive.
Sounds good to me.
So can I ask this? I mean, I might be, uh, I'm not trying to be presumptuous, but, um, Dr. Kupuletti's already sent his statement to Drew. I'm just, I'm just, I mean, I know she will get an article out. I know you've already got a letter.
It hasn't been written. The article.
Can we take a step back? I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to delay it, but I'm just saying, I just think that on decisions like this, especially when you're asking for multiple people to voice how they, their concern about it, um, I think it, it just begs to have a few more, I don't know, more discussion. I, I think that we can, we can appear very splintered to,
Yes.
one person says this, and one person says this, and one person says this. We all agree that the warrior head logo needs to go. But now we have in varying opinions on whether the spear or whether the word warrior, you know, should stay. And, 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 and I think that we need to knock it around a little bit more. Now, there's been no paint anywhere on our new buildings that says warriors. We're in the right time to make the change, if you will, you know, to, to embrace. I mean, our timing, this, the timing of this could not have been more perfect for us in that we've already been working on this. This is nothing new. We've been working on this for the last, say, I know four and a half years. I mean, maybe five years and like Mr. Smith said, six, he's, he's owned up six. Okay? So, you know, this has not been something that has not been on our radar. So, but to this point where we're actually talking about removing it now, uh, we also don't want to be offensive to any of our community members who might feel particularly strong about it. You know, um, uh, uh, we don't want to, uh, offend them either. It's, it's a very delicate place that we are, but I do believe that we do have to talk to the people because I don't think, not just, I mean, I want to say, I don't necessarily, I, I, we can hear from what our community feels, but nothing can be done about us without us. That still rings very strong in my mind. So when Dr. Kupuletti brings up about the National Congress of, of American Indians and the NACI, I, I, I kind of, I kind of feel like, yeah, we, we do need to talk or hear from somebody in that organization, because you can't say what offends a person. And, and because our history is that the word warrior, I initially thought, like everyone else, the word warrior could stay because it talks about somebody being brave. It talks about somebody being a fighter, somebody never giving up. But if those also, what his last thing that he read, the warrior savage myth, we don't want, I don't, we don't like, uh, Mr. McGowan said, if it's five people, we don't want to offend those five people in our midst, you know? So, um, I don't know, uh, like, I would just like to hold up on sending out the article if it's okay with everyone, if everybody feels the same way. I mean, work on your paragraph or your few sentences that you want to give to Drew. But if we could just have her hold up until we have an opportunity. But if we could just have her hold up until we have an opportunity to do some further investigation through the community engagement or however we want to go about doing this with, say, the Native American community and the voices that speak for the Native American community, some of these organizations, the National Congress of Native Americans, to see how just the use of the word, it might send, it might, it does nothing for, for, for some of us, but then for a, a group of people, the use of the word because of the myth of the word, you know.
Well, I, I'd like to add one part. One of the things that I, that I'd like for us to be very conscious about, these are, these are times in our, in our history right now where social awareness is at the top. Okay? The whole thing. And people are sensitive about many things that they may not have ever touched years ago. So sparking the issue about conversations, I'm ready for anything that comes out from the board and we can handle it and, and be very, very professional about it. But there are two parts that I'd like for us to just really just kind of pay attention to. I think the one thing where Mr. Birdie mentioned Golden State Warriors. Well, no one's talked to them about that term and it is a bridge. And what it means to them is what it means to them. And I think the other part is the logo of the chief's head. The logo of the chief's head is also symbolic of something. Somebody likes it somewhere. However, I think Ms. Ruggles makes a very good point that when you take the chief head with the spear, those two things look like they mirror each other. They go together. And I think that some of it has a lot to do with tradition of how long we've used them together. So I think in order for us to really have a clear spirit about it, we should try to separate these things in our mind. Do they go together or are we putting them together because they've always been together? And can we separate them and do it in a way that's going to be respectful to other people? Or do they leave altogether? Whatever the case, whatever the appetite is the board, the board has, you know, of course, I'm with it. I just want to make sure that we're doing it and we're doing it with a level of respect to everybody involved.
I agree. I agree. So is everybody okay on board with us holding up on Drew doing the article until we pass?
Okay.
Even finished. It's just still with its rap.
Okay, and I'll, and I, you know, it made me think about what you were just saying, Dr. Johnson. One, I would love for Drew to reach out to that local guy. And I'll try to see if I can figure out what his name is because he runs a local Native American organization. But you made me think. So we're talking about doctor, I mean, Mr. Smith just said, okay, the Golden State Warriors. And you see the Golden Gate Bridge. I just did a quick Google search of Golden State Warriors old logos. And from forty-six to nineteen sixty-two, they have a nasty picture of a Native American riding with a basketball with a headdress in his head that is very demeaning.
Okay. And so did they get rid of warrior or did they get rid of the logo?
No, they kept the name, but I'm just saying, I still go back to your perception is your reality. So if in fact you were a Golden State Warrior fan back in the fifties and you remember this nasty logo, just taking that warrior name off, I mean, taking that, that Indian or Native American off of there, I would still be offended, me personally.
This is why this topic begs for more discussion.
Hey Doc, can you, can you encourage your colleagues to send questions to the questionnaire though?
Oh, absolutely. We want to do that. Work up some questions. Mr. Smith has asked us to, he wants to send out a survey to the community with regards to this topic. And he would like for us to work up a few questions that we would like to see on the survey. We might come up with a combination of maybe two or three people have the same question and then they'll, you know, put it together so that, you know, the survey makes sense. But if each board colleague could do that and get their questions to Mr. Smith, do you want a deadline on that?
Yeah, I would like for us to be able to have a, a more, a, a conversation with the public because that comes, our next board meeting is on the twenty-seventh. So if that could be, if they could send the questions to me, I would really appreciate it. And guys, these are questions, yeah, by, I would say that if I could get the questions by next Friday, that would be really good.
So Friday, the seventeenth or Friday to twenty-fourth?
Friday, the seventeenth would, would be good. Friday to twenty-fourth, I would still be accepting. So if you need a couple of weeks, that's fine. The other thing is, please keep in mind, it's a survey, not a dissertation. So it, it has to be questions where they don't have to write you two or three paragraphs back. It's really based about, would you do this? Yes or no? And then we can compile that data and then I could run some percentages for you and also look at a pie graph or a bar graph, whatever your appetite is. In addition to that, we'll still reach out to the Native Americans of society and see what they think about it. We're going to do everything we can possibly do to make it work.
The last thing with that is, I would also suggest that, and I'm sure you guys will probably already do this. Let's make sure, however we get the survey out, we've got multiple ways of getting this out to the community. It should be on our website. It should be in our email list, whatever way we can to get as big a, a response as, as possible. Because you know what's going to happen, no matter what we do, somebody's going to come back and say, hey, you know, I wish I had a chance to give my two cents. So the more we get it out there, the better.
Mr. McGowan, you're one hundred percent correct because the next topic that's going to come up, that's definitely going to be part of the conversation. People wanted to give, people will say, where, where's my input? So stay tuned.
And then I, and I, I got to thank you guys. I mean, I've been on a lot of boards and this has been, I mean, we all have our feelings and this has been very cordial. You know, I, I, you know, I mean, I wanted to reach through and kind of grab Mr. Smith, but, you know, I didn't. And I, I appreciate the, everybody involved.
Because if you tried to do that, sir, you would see a warrior. So that's a different situation.
I got you. I got you. I know we've been on for a long time and we still haven't even got to the important stuff.
Yeah, we still have, we have a lot of meat left on this bone, so we have.
Oh, shoot, let's go.
We do need to move on. But we were just, just bored, that's what we would like to do, get questions to Mr. Smith. Kind of yes or no questions. And then if he needed to put a little thing why, then they would be able to type a sentence, but not anything that would like require, you know, long, long explanation.
Guys, if I don't get your questions, I can't include them.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Okay? All right, so that's that topic. And I thought it was going to be shorter than that, but it wasn't. And I think, well, you know, the reason I, I, and, and, and I did open up the, the floor. And the reason I did is because whenever you're taking something and you're going to put it publicly in the newspaper and you have five different voices, six counting the superintendent's voices talking about the same topic, we need to hash that out to make sure that we're on the same page, you know, before our opinions go out, because then that's what splinters the community too, you know. We want to, I really wanted to make sure.
Somebody, and I'm glad that the, the board is, is conscious of it, but someone somewhere chose that logo. So there's somebody somewhere leaves something about it, which I can tell based on the conversation we have, we don't, but someone does. And we don't.
Well, thank you for the history lesson.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Smith, if you would go ahead to your next topic. I, I expected that one to be long because we have, he sent us three documents, right? There's three documents that are in board docs with respect to this next topic. So, Mr. Smith, would you go ahead and talk to us about the plans for reopening schools? And which one of these three documents are you going to start with?
Okay, so I'm not going to start with a document. I'm actually going to start out with a survey, all right? And I will send these numbers to you, but if you could write them down quickly so you could have something to reference back to. It's only four, it's only going to be nine bullet points, but they are only numeric in value, all right? So the first question was, how comfortable are you with sending your child to a school building every day this fall if all of the recommended health and safety measures such as social distancing are in place? So we sent out the survey asking the question, how would you feel if all the things were in place in order to make sure that we are creating a safer environment? Forty point four percent says they were comfortable with that. Thirty-nine percent says they would hesitant, they would, they would hesitate with some concerns. Fifteen point nine percent says they would not send their child to school. And four point seven says, I don't know. So again, forty point four were comfortable. Thirty-nine percent were hesitant with some concerns. Fifteen point nine says will not send the child. And four point seven says, I don't know. The second question, how comfortable are you with sending your child on a bus every day this fall if all the recommended health and safety measures such as social distancing are in place? There were fourteen hundred, one thousand four hundred and twenty-seven responses. Thirty-two percent say they were very comfortable. Thirty point five hesitant, concerned. Twenty-three point three says they would not send their child on the bus. Five point two says, I don't know. And of course, nine percent not applicable because their kids don't ride the bus. Okay. So you guys have those numbers. Now I'm going to go into having a quick, not a quick, but a conversation about the documents. So what we did is we use a platform, a project-based learning platform to discuss the documents. And the team was divided into three groups, but they were not divided into groups in any kind of numeric value other than which of these plans do you believe that you would like to defend or you would like to present information on? So the first one is, we started out with the virtual plan. And the reason we started out with the virtual plan is because that's where we are right now. We ran a virtual high, a virtual summer school. But one of the things that made us make some changes with the summer school, we were going to do a transition program for our most media's kids who had struggled the most academically and tried to bring them to a face-to-face. But once we saw the spike, the spike in this, in, in this particular community based on zip code, we decided not to do that for fear of creating a, a more, you know, more issues around COVID nineteen. So we kept the entire summer program in a remote status from high school all the way to elementary. And of course, you know, there were no incidents that occurred based on us having a remote summer school experience. The one thing that the team mentioned, even the team that was talking about the remote, the virtual plan, the, the one thing that they did mention is the virtual plan that we had before, the rush plan that happened in March fifteenth, like every other district, no district was really prepared for that. The closest district that was prepared for is probably us because we already had the Chromebooks issued for our older children, but for the most part, no district was ready for that. So we are happy and, 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 and appreciative that the board is saying, we will give you ten days, ten additional days to create a robust virtual plan. The virtual plan that we rolled out at the end is not something that we would be rolling out now. Ours would have more depth and more breadth to how to really deal with kids and finding them and making sure they had all of the technology and all the infrastructure in order to run the system. All right? So that's the first one, the communicating plan about the virtual school. One of the drawbacks is they, people still believe that the virtual kid is still not getting a robust educational experience and it does have shortcomings along the way. All right? The next one, and I'm going to tell you guys how I believe I would like for you to support, support moving through these programs. The next one is the full school operation. The team that created the full school operation, if you see it had opportunity gains and risk associated in bullet points on the front part of the section. It also talks about academics, but one of the things that the team had to realize is first and foremost, our, our main goal, we are educators. So first and foremost, our main objective is to educate kids, but we also know that safety is part of who we are. This time around, safety is moved to the forefront of trying to educate kids. Safety is first and foremost. If you can't keep them safe, then we have some other issues along the way. So this team recognized that, but they also recognized the shortcomings that kids were not getting. You have a brand new kid who has never met his teacher. He meets his teacher online. Is that optimal? Well, maybe not. There are other members of the team who thought that we opened school and we put all the safety measures into place. And if we have to shut down, then we have to shut down. But we put everything in place and gave it a, a great fight, especially for our kids on IEPs and 504s. Another member of the team thought that it would be a good move if we brought the students with disabilities in as a face-to-face opportunity. And then finally, where the conflict lies is where the Ohio High School Athletic Association, along with the governor's office, says, it's okay to have athletes come and practice. Well, to me, that's, that's a backward move simply because you're having football, but you can't have regular school. The other conflict for me is, what do we do about a parent who says, I don't want my kid to come to school? I want him to be virtual, but I do want him to play on the football team and practice in the evenings. Believe it or not, that is going to come our way. So the reentry plan does have pros and cons to it. But it also is a very, very big challenge, knowing that every one of these plans, guys, had to be, had to put a position in that you would have to go to a remote situation quickly, with the exception of the remote situation, of course. The third plan, which is the plan that another team worked on, it's just the A B. The A B, in my opinion, is like opening school, all right? It's just that they are not there as often. If they're going to have the same teacher in the A B situation and you have COVID-like symptoms or anything connected to it, then I don't know what the difference is in doing an A B. I think it creates the social distancing, but I think it just puts a factor in. Social distancing is great if nobody has the, the virus. But if somebody has the virus, is social distancing enough? So the A B, I think for members of the board that remember our professional development days, that was every other Wednesday where students went half-days. That is a juggernaut. That is very, very difficult to manage. And we had upset parents saying, you have another half-day. We also have to figure out on the A B schedule, if Mr. McAlwin, if his son is scheduled to come Monday, Tuesday, and then be off Wednesday, and then come Thursday, Friday of the next week. One of the things that's confusing is what would stop his kid from coming every day? What would you do to him? Would you send him home? Would you put him back on the bus? What would you do? So we have to make sure that we have a real solid plan. If we're going to go with something that's going to be a blended learning opportunity, we have to be ready for it. And we have to be ready for it in a way that the blended opportunity could soon shift to be a virtual experience anyway. So what I'm proposing is you review your documents, you look at them carefully, you ask me a thousand questions about them. And the board come back on the, at the board meeting and then decide which opportunity do you think is best for our children, knowing that we have unprecedented times and COVID has not gone anywhere at this point. We also have to remember when you talk about kids being asymptomatic, well, that's, that's the child's part of it. But not many, if any of my, my FTEs are twenty-year-olds. They're all thirty, forty, fifty-year-old people that may be vulnerable to the virus. Then again, I don't know. So I'm not willing to, you know, roll the dice with this particular situation. All I'm saying is that you have three plans, two of them are kind of the same. But I'm not sure what the board's appetite is based on what the community is saying. The community is saying forty percent feel comfortable, thirty-nine percent are hesitant, fifteen percent says they won't send, four percent, I don't know. So we plan on doing uh an additional survey uh once people, people are waiting to hear what is Witten Woods going to do, but I have to tell you, it wasn't that we were negligent. It's just the fact that this was the community that had the, the highest spike. And so putting out something uh that you have to retract in a matter of days, because you know how quickly this COVID process moves, is not something that I was interested in. So I decided that we would move slow and we would get the opinion of the board. And then we could move faster as you guys already had the information in front of.
Mr. Smith, can I ask one question? Um uh I'll ask this question, Mr. McGowan, and then you can ask your question. Um with, with the, and I, I read the documents, but I didn't see anywhere where we were going to any kind of way assist the parents that may have to go back to work. You like say if there was like a A B group. So on the days that that group is, are supposed to be working from home, if their parents have already gone back to work. Like what is the plan? Then the parent is responsible for finding daycare or childcare then on those days because the kid, you know, second or third grader by himself.
Yeah, well, here's the thing, we are not childcare providers. We provide patients. And, and I think that one of the things that makes it difficult is when you can't provide a full service operation for every kid in every situation. We don't have the capacity nor the dollars to do that. So if we were going to run a daycare service, then the daycare service would actually compromise our um virtual experience, first of all. It would also compromise our blended learning experience because you're putting more kids on campus. And that would compromise it as well. Uh we would also have to find which person would be willing to have the daycare experience. What does it look like? Because you're talking about an experience that runs from pre K to six even, because some of those kids still go to after school or daycare services. So we actually thought about that, but we did not know based on what the board's appetite was, was that what was responsibility or the responsibility of the parent?
Okay. The other question that I had uh to go along with that is I know that we were asking all the kids or teachers and everyone to have a mask when I, you know, reading these documents. Um are we going to supply masks?
Yes, yes, Dr. Johnson. Based on the information where Mr. Seymour mentioned the CARES Act funds, we would have enough masks to actually take care of every uh adult and every child with more than one mask.
I was thinking uh then how would, more than one mask, how would you then uh a child that had a mask, how would you um make sure they brought it back? I mean, is there any plan to, I don't know, give them a zip pack bag to keep it in, to keep it on at school? Because if they take it home, it's not coming back.
You're right. Once we get into the specifics of it, depends on what the board wants us, what direction they want us to move in. Remember, these are washable masks that are pretty durable, that can stand a lot of washings. And if I say every kid gets two or three masks, please keep in mind, there will have to be other masks here that we would have to supply the kid with to make sure that he was safe during that, this educational experience.
Would some of the masks be um a, a part of like school supply? You know how you have tissue that, that comes in, you have, you know, all the many things that are, and I'm sure parents would wanna make sure that their kids have some mask and we are a backup to if they forgot it, but not the primary.
Yeah, we, we, we wanna be the primary because we wanna take more responsibility. The CARES Act money helps us be the primary.
Oh, okay, okay, that's perfect. That's perfect.
That, that's a budget issue, but with the CARES Act money, and I know you, Ms. Seymour, we've been very, very careful what we use that CARES Act money for and how we make it work.
Okay, that's perfect.
Down the road, we're gonna come back to you because there are two important buildings that are part of being demolished or that's part of a demolishing opportunity. That's the middle school, current middle school and the high school. One of the things that we're hoping that we can put together a package for is if this thing stays like it is, or if it dissipates or whatever the case may be. Uh having those two buildings that are in walking distance of each other actually helps us have more social distancing because we have more space in order to operate from. We demolished the other ones that are not part of this, this process, but the high school and the middle school could, could prove to be very beneficial. And then the other final piece, in order for us to make up the deficits, we've got some deficit educational parts that we have to address. And maybe down the road, because we will have uh air conditioned buildings with the uh most advanced HVAC system known to man at this point. Uh we create something called a year round experience so our kids can catch up with where they, where they've been lost along the way. So uh those were good questions, talked about the mask. Uh we were prepared to do the mask and uh make sure that we did the deep cleaning uh in between sections and between bales, whatever the case may be. Because our parents are saying, we want our kids in school for a variety of reasons, for their own well being. But the other part is school is safer, safer than being at home. And then the other part is you're talking about the breakfast lunch experience, we would have to create that. Um in a variety of businesses. One of the things that uh in the new schools that we put onto, on, on, in play is um that there would be no central cafeteria and kids would actually be having uh their lunch in this common place and save money by not using a big cafeteria and use the money wisely to create more educational space. Well, if you look at all the reports, and I've looked at forty seven different districts. You, most of them are talking about kids having lunch in their classrooms now and not creating lunch in the cafeteria spaces that were designed for. We were far further ahead of that plan. We were never going to put the cafeteria in. It was going to be distributed dining in the new schools. Mr. Day pilot, did a pilot on that program uh this year. He ran it this whole year at um IS and the teachers and the students felt it was a more appropriate setting. And uh as far as bullying reports and those kinds of things, it actually dropped that uh expeditiously. So we know we're almost something big with the distributed dining. It's just that it's not here yet because that's the new building fundamental uh process that we're talking about using. It's already designed for that.
Um, you know, and, and I read through this stuff and I've got to give you and your staff kudos because this is very well thought out. I looked at all these different documents and um it looks like you tried to cover pretty much everything. And I do love, you got in here, we should try, we should not try to return to normal, would rather strive for something better. Awesome. Now my questions are kinda going to um what Ms. Ruggles said. Um I know we have some money from the CARES Act and I think on one of those, one of my first question is you guys talked about where um low cost broadband internet through spectrum. Um at first is, is free for any Witten Woods student. But then the second part says low cost broadband internet. If there's any way we can make sure that every child has access to internet, whether or not they can afford it or not, and using some of those funds, I would highly suggest that.
I don't know if we can use funds for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that was one. The other one was um, and it looks like, you know, I think you guys are leaning probably toward doing remote, like you said, the first semester. And then um seeing how things are going, talk about doing the A B schedule. Um and in the remote learning, I read in here where they talked about the grading. And I just wanna make sure that the grading is done consistently, consistently as opposed to at the end of the remote learning period. I assume they'll be getting graded as they're going on as opposed to all the way at the end now getting the grade. And you find these kids have not done what they should do. So um
Yeah, to answer that, uh eh you know about our educational platform, which is Echo. So in Echo, grades are put in and assignments are put in every day. So kids are getting back every day. No, we will, we don't wait to the end. We wouldn't wait to the end in any of these uh scenarios because I think it would be detrimental to the kid and it would actually overwhelm the teacher. Because parent, still needs to be parent conversations, um parent back, parent uh meetings, those kinds of things to let parents know how their kids are moving through uh this process. Uh so I, I think you're right about the questions as it relates to the remote versus uh the other piece. The team, when you look at, even though they helped create these documents, once we started having our own rigorous conversation about it, they're not so in tune with the A B because they believe it will confuse parents. They believe that it's, it's, it's a, it's a process where parents will be, is it my day, not my day? And in order to make this thing work, you have to try to gravitate or grab kids from the same household and have them come the same day or the same week. Well, if you know a thing about our community, some of these kids don't have the same name. And eh that could be odd when you're trying to pair people up because you're going by Harris, but the kid's last name is Smith, even though he lives with the Harris family.
Right, I did, I did see where you, where you said you were gonna try to do that by, by households. Um I think that um is probably gonna come down to either all remote or they're back in school. You know, like you said, the A B could be difficult logistically. Um but the other pieces were, you know, I mean, Ms. Ruggles talked about the mask. I love that idea. I love that we've got money to do that. And I think in one of these documents you even had on here where when we're giving the parents a list of school supplies, the mask and, you know, and um hand sanitizers and things will be on there. So I think that's great. The last and most important piece to me is I read somewhere where they were talking about as an example, a teacher in high school was teaching the A B schedule, we'll use that as an example. I don't know if she'll have multiple classes a day. But even if she had somebody Monday, Tuesday, another group of kids, Wednesday, Thursday, if she becomes COVID positive, now do all of those kids in both of her classes and all of her classes now have to be quarantined in addition to whatever kids rode the bus with those kids?
Well, the answer to your question, according to the CDC, the answer is yes. Because uh remember, based on the contract, a teacher can see no more than a hundred and fifty kids a day in a high school setting. So but you have to figure out the hundred and fifty are from all cross sections. You may have a ninth grader in our Spanish class and a senior in our Spanish class and a multiple of, of other grades seeing that thing.
Oh, yeah.
It's a cross section. The other part of, when you talk about the little kids, well, the little kids, it's more interesting because let's say Ms. Ruggles was the first grade teacher and she has her uh classroom of twenty five. Well, if there's a COVID like positive situation, well, that twenty five would have to be quarantined for the fourteen days. It would have to be tested, of course, Ms. Ruggles would also have to be tested. But the major issue is that twenty five didn't just interact with that twenty five. They rode the bus, they were somewhere, somewhere, somewhere. And uh some of them are walkers, some of them are on the bus. So it, it's a variety of things that happen. One of the uh plans that we talked about on the table, which actually was a very good plan, it's, it's a strategic nightmare to, to pull it off. But let's say that Mr. Birdie and Mr. McGowan, both of you guys taught history. You taught uh US history. And you had thirty kids and he had thirty kids every bell. Well, what would happen is we would try to divide your kids into two groups. And what you would end up doing is for ten days or fifteen days, depending on how long it takes the virus to go in remission. In fifteen days, what you would do is you would have your straight class coming to you fifteen days in a row. After that, your whole group leaves and Mr. and Mr. McGowan, your group comes for fifteen days. And it's a three week process, but you would also be working remotely those other five, those other fifteen days. You would take both groups, pair those groups with other kids that are on your team and Mr. Birdie's team, which means you're self quarantining every time you're away from the school for the fifteen or fourteen. Now, that has some bumps along the way because it's a numbers game. You have to be very, very tight with numbers to pull that one off in order to really make it work. Uh so there are so many different formulas and plans out there. The main thing is, how do we keep our kids safe, but also keep our staff safe? The last part of reading it, see in the formula is um there are people, there are teachers across the country that are now saying they will have letters that will say that they cannot come to work even though they are not COVID compromised. They may have high blood pressure, they may be diabetic, there may be other symptoms that create this.
Underlying health issues.
Sending letters, they're sending letters now saying they can't come and that would automatically be your remote teacher. Okay, so everybody that's on the screen that I'm looking at now is smart. All right? That's a fact. And the fact remains, no matter what, if we said we were going to have school tomorrow, there are some other, their parents that have said, I'm doing remote. Okay? There will be a remote group, no matter what we, no matter what we would have tried, A B week or every day. Okay? With, in some cases, it does help the situation because they've taken themselves off the grid. The problem with it is whatever they committed to, they would have to commit for an entire semester because we can't have kids back and forth. One day I wanna be socially distanced, the next day I don't. But one day I wanna be with my peers, the next day I don't. So it's very complicated, but uh Mr. McGowan, I do appreciate your, your first feedback where uh the people who worked on this plan tried to take everything into consideration to make sure there was a safety educational plan for every kid in our district.
And I think that, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, and then I'm done. Yeah, I know, I've, I've kinda dominated this. And this is probably the least important piece, but it's the piece that's closest to me. And everybody, school districts, colleges, everybody's gonna be under the gun about these athletics. So if we go to a remote um way of teaching, are we gonna have football in the fall?
Well, that depends on what the Ohio High School Athletic Association says. And remember, we're governed under the Ohio High School Athletic Association. And it also depends on what other teams and other communities do. So if other people around us saying they're gonna play football and we're saying, no, our kids' safety is more important, we're not going to, well, just remember that means something.
Well, what's gonna happen is Ohio High, you know, they, they're already talking and they're going back and forth. And what they're gonna do, they're gonna push it back on the school districts. They're gonna say, you guys do, you guys do what you wanna do and we're gonna not be liable or anything.
Well, you remember, there are ten teams in our league now. And all ten of those teams would have to kinda have some agreeable position. I don't know if you saw the editorial piece where the parent mentioned, she is a Cincinnati Public School parent. And Cincinnati Public School has a variety of plans, okay? And one of the things that they mentioned is uh they were going to go to an A B and not come every day. But what the parent challenged was, yeah, you're going to an A B, but teachers in your communities where you live, they're going every day. So you're putting my kid in a virtual situation or half virtual, but your kids are going every day, which means who gets the advantage of the educational structure? We know that face to face instruction is a hell of a lot better than the remote deal. Anybody who tells you that it's not, well, guess what? They probably haven't experienced. And so one of the things that I did mention uh as the first part of my conversation, we fell into a virtual experience. Now we have to be good at it. We have to be very, very good at it and very intentional about how our kids go into Zoom meetings, come out, participate, be part of their peers, be part of the conversation. Because I can tell you, every kid who's a senior right now, what is he worried about? He's worried about that virtual graduation that he does not want. Okay? Every kid who's an athlete is worrying about practicing, but not getting a chance to finish and play and participate in games. So and it's the band and it's the cheerleaders and it's the music ensemble and it's V E and it's the musical. It's all of these things. So you guys are, we are fortunate that we are in a district that has a thousand different attributes. But every one of those attributes creates another juggernaut of this thing. But every one of those attributes creates another juggernaut of this thing. If we were a pure academic institution and did not have any amenities, simpler process. But we're not. We're complicated. We have kids that's from all over the place. And then the last part that we, you may not see in the plan, but this is something that's gonna be part of the drafts. Kids that are in speech, that are identified with their I A P, or kids who have language issues, they will not be able to wear a mask. They will have to have a mat, a face shield so you can watch how they articulate their sounds and blends and the phonics that they're working on. So you will have to look at them while they do it. And you can't look at it through a mask because the mask makes their language barrier more more absorbed. It makes it bigger. So they would actually have to have on clear face shields to be able to articulate to their teacher that they understands the sounds and blends and all the other things that go along with it. That's why they're there. If you don't do it, then what you've done is you violated their I A P.
I I just, I, my, I am absolutely overwhelmed with even just thinking about all the elements that need to go into this plan. Cause one thing affects so much more. You know, when I think about our students and I think about grandma and grandpa or older gener- who are raising children and raising their grandchildren. And I had one parent that reached out to me who said he's immunocompromised and he's very concerned about what exposure of his kids being into school will comes back home to to him and individuals who are, you know, the work that the staff has to do because, like Mr. Smith said, we were thrown into the virtual learning, but we have to be good at it and at the level of accountability and making sure that there's consistency between classroom to classroom and teacher to teacher amongst all the other things that are happening with individuals who don't want to send their kids, it's teachers who may not want to come. So I just, I think, you know, and then trying to work against the timeline that we have with schools starting and numbers going up, increasing and just, I don't know, just feeling like the the information and the mandate or the the rules or, for lack of a better word, is like changing, like, yeah, the numbers are going, now now people are really concerned about what do we do? Do we actually have an online um situation? And the best we can do is try to plan for so many different scenarios. You know, I have a colleague who's a board member who pulled his kids out of the, out of the school district um and sent them to um a a different school district because they were all day and that, and they couldn't afford daycare for the split.
So they were going to have schedules. The other district they're having school is what you're saying? And the other one is remote?
His district is remote.
Okay.
The the district he's sending is five days a week. And because it's remote, they were saying, well, I can't, in good faith, you know, I can't afford to put my kids in um daycare on or off whatever days. And I can't expect the daycare provider to provide educational oversight for my children to make sure they're doing the work, cause I have to work.
Yeah, because you can imagine having, you know, thirty parents like that and thirty kids having the devices. But who's monitoring the devices where they still run their own daycare program for their regular kids? You're right.
Right. And so, you know, there's just the accountability that goes at the heightened level of accountability that the teachers will have with, you know, the the system, not just the teachers, but the system will have in making sure that we are good at what we're doing in a um, you know, a a situation of of online. And, you know, we're good, we're, I don't know, I don't know. I'll let you go, Dr. Johnson, you were gonna say something.
I just wanted to back up to one thing. I know he said we were going to supply the mask for the the shield. And um I know that it's really hard to get like a kindergartner or first grader to keep anything over their mouth. So it might just be a plan to have all of the younger kids with the face shield, you know, um whether they're doing speech or not. Those might be more expensive, I don't know. But um I just don't, I mean, if you could get them to keep it on, but uh we're talking about six or seven hours in a day. You know what I'm saying?
It's it's more than that, cause they gotta do it on the bus too.
Well, they gotta do it on the bus too. So the shield would just kind of be like wearing a baseball cap, you know? It would be over their face, but it would be, I mean, they would still have the freedom, you know, to speak. So I don't know, it's just a thought that that uh I I thought about, like as, for for the younger kids. And it still might be, I've seen, I I, we haven't been going out to restaurants and that, but we were driving past and we seen um one lady in the drive-thru with her mask down on her chin. What good is that? You know, like, so everybody, she's talking to, the mask is on her chin, so I'm like, I don't necessarily think before I take the. And I had an appointment the other day and the lady literally told me, I think this is a farce. I'm like, are you kidding? I've now had seven family members die from this and you don't believe it's real? So it's like, what are you talking, everybody's older than me. So, you know, but but, you know, I'm like, okay, well, is, I think that we we, you're doing the right thing. I I I commend your administrative team for looking at it at all different angles, you know, and 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 pounding it out and trying to say, okay, what if, what if, what if, you know, because um and I know that you guys were working on this before school even let out, cause you and I had a conversation about even when when we were still in school for um the last year. So I know that you guys have been working on this diligently, but um we do have to come up with something. Board, it's likely that we're gonna have to vote on something, um and it might be at our next meeting. So we need to read all of these um pages that he has sent us, shoot back the questions that you might have. I don't know whether this is something that we could go into executive session for at our regular board meeting, but we might need to have some further discussion or whatever, but we're gonna have to make. Uh uh one other question I I do have, um I know that there was talk at the end of the school year about potentially, depending on where uh this uh uh virus was and what was going on, setting the school year back to start a little later than um.
Yeah, that's a good point, Doc. So one of the things, first of all, I appreciate the board giving us the flexibility to move it two weeks. Uh, we have, uh, we used to have the one week of professional development. I'm gonna tell you guys, based on the diversity training and the COVID training and the educational training and the safety training, we will need every bit of that two weeks in order to make it work. Now, there are some legislators that are talking about, I I'm in favor of it, but again, I am the worker, all right? But I've been watching very, very carefully, keeping my own data. Every time there's a holiday, there is a spike of some sort, okay? And so we're talking about the next one, which is what?
What, Labor Day?
Yes. So basically, you'll have people forgetting to social distance again, having their grill outs and all of their social contacts. And then our, we have to apply something to do it. The problem for me is if we do, if we open school before Labor Day, uh what did it do? Because that's a whole nother process. So do things dissipate after people have had their fun, their Fourth of July, their Memorial Day, their thing? And then it kind of, just kind of slows down? Well, guess what? It does, but it slows down very, very slowly. The 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 slowdown is very slow. So again, when those people, and you gotta understand, these people have been bottled up and cooped up for all of this time. And then they figure, what's one day going to hurt to be out with friends and family? Well, it could actually cost you your life. So it depends on where you are with it and how you see the strategies that schools are talking about. Schools are under fire at this point. They've got to figure out what's the best plan for the majority of their kids so they get, so that they learn and not fall further behind. And we have that same concern, we have that same idea. And what I'm proposing is that you guys look at your documents, read them carefully. Uh, we've looked at forty-seven different school districts all across the country in order to try to talk about what's the best comprehensive plan for Witten Woods. But you guys should look at it and then send me information. But I think Dr. Johnson makes a very good point. As your president, there has to be a vote very soon about what's gonna happen here. We can't leave parents in limbo. We've held off as long as we could to watch other districts self-destruct as you, as you, as I, as I see it, where they've had to change their plan all these different times. We brought you three different cases and the virtual one is going to be created with or without us. Parents have already said, I'm going to live in this virtual world until something else happens with COVID, all right? So it's just information on the table for us. And uh here we go. I do have a question for Mr. Birdy. Are you still there, Mr. Birdy?
Absolutely.
Okay, what's, 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 what's Harry doing with all these campuses, these uh, the Oaks?
They are actually going to go to an A B type schedule. Where they have students, where they have a student there on Monday and Thursday and then the other students there Tuesday, Friday, and then a day, um a day in the middle that's not, where the students aren't on campus. That's the current plan, based on the meeting we just had last Wednesday night.
Yes, sir. Okay, all right.
And and the question, the question came up about that too. I mean, the things that have been brought up here as far as, you know, a- and I think the one thing that they were looking at is bringing the kids back, obviously. They've got labs and they've got hands-on stuff that they need the kids to be able to do and a lot of those different programs that they're in. And uh, and they did it the way they did it just because they didn't want to do, you know, you're there Monday, Tuesday this week and then you're there Thursday, Friday the week after. Did that that gap in between, they forward a problem. But but the concern is the same that everybody has. I mean, as far as, how do you clean the rooms? How do you make sure all the equipment, everything is safe for the kids coming in, you know, the next day? Cause they're talking about changing it, you know, there's a different group of kids coming in on Tuesday than was there on Monday. So it's not.
Yes, sir. They have very sophisticated equipment and in order for the kids to get their clock hours, they have to be on that equipment to get it right.
Yeah, so that that's their current plan.
Okay.
I've got a copy of it, which I was gonna bring to the next board meeting as part of my Great Oaks report. I can send it to you.
Okay, uh I think what 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 Harry Snyder and his team is doing at this point, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Birdy, they're saying, listen, we understand the world of remote, but our kids work better face-to-face and our teachers do better face-to-face. Uh, we are going to create our social distancing as best we can, but in order to give a kid a fair chance to secure his future, he has to be with some direct instruction at some point in time and not on a computer.
Yeah, I mean, that's it.
The advantage that he has uh goes back to Dr. Johnson's point. A little kid wearing a mask is a challenge, but there are older kids at the Oaks, but people don't know that they also have a daycare service at the Oaks where if they're gonna teach kids how to be daycare providers, that's one of their skill sets. That's one of their processes that they use. So even though the Oaks has older kids, they do have another component, which are younger kids there.
Yeah, it's true.
So can I ask a question, please?
A thousand.
So um I've read the documents. The virtual plan is fairly complete. The others have numerous holes that um haven't been addressed. Um, so I've sort of made up my mind, I could go with something that has been developed. Uh, but I would certainly need a lot more information before I could go to the full school or blended. Uh, there there are simple things like, in one place, they call for the students to have Clorox wipes. And I challenge anyone to find some in any store anywhere. Um, that's just one quick one. And the other is, I looked up the June, the July first recommendations from the CDC and they are very complete with a lot of questions that we don't address in our plans. So um right now, I'm comfortable with the virtual plan. I have a lot of questions about the other two.
So Dr. Coupalletti, can you still hear me?
Yes, sir.
When you uh get the opportunity, can you, can we begin to uh have these emails back and forth so that we can figure out, uh because I'm gonna go back to my team tomorrow to talk to them about what are some other things that we need to shore up, what are some changes that need to be made? Uh, as Dr. Johnson mentioned, how available are the masks? Uh, I think we gave you guys information that the CARES Act would take care of that. So if there are conversations that need to be held, uh I'd like to hold them sooner than later so that you guys will have a fair opportunity to give a recommendation to my office about what you believe the plan is going to be. As Dr. Johnson mentioned the earlier, when we were talking about the Native American situation, uh, keep in mind, guys, you guys are are are, you don't have to think alike, you don't have to act alike, but you do have to support each other's ideas in in the process. So having, being members of a team of five, uh what does that look like if you go three, two? If you go four, one, uh it it looks like something to someone, what does that mean? So you have to be re- remember that if you guys go with a three-two split, three says regular school and two say virtual, every virtual parent that wanted that experience will contact you to have you push on other board members to get it to change. That's what Cincinnati Public is going through right now. Other board members have been dealt with with their constituents. And uh keep in mind, we have something very powerful happening in November. People say, hey, listen, if you don't give me what I want, then I'm gonna do something else. The last part uh that uh Ms. Ruggles mentioned about the two districts that are in close proximity, where the one member says, these people are going to go to school. That means I can keep my job and do what I need to do to take care of my family because I don't have to worry about the babysitting services. Well, there's a consequence for that. Whatever the case may be, uh we have to kind of stare it in the face and look at it. Who will force to say, what's the best plan for our kids to get the optimal education that they deserve, all right? Um, when you mentioned that there are incomplete pieces to it, I think that anybody could sit on a committee and say they're incomplete pieces when you're not on that committee. So if you gave me a draft of something, I bet I could find holes in it. But I think the part that makes it whole for us is if you solidify the work and say, superintendent, let's firm this up and then let's make, let's make these plans look as agreeable as we possibly can. That's what gives my team a lot of hope about what they're doing. Cause they're gonna try to make decisions for four thousand kids and about six hundred employees, and that's big. And then here's the final factor that we have to consider. Just like that parent made the transition, and I'm not saying this in a derogatory way. I don't want everybody's kids, okay? So if we decide to do something, then we look good, we look better than other places. If we went to a virtual experience, some people would say, yay. If we go to a blended, like uh Mr. Birdy mentioned about the Oaks, some people who are in a virtual will say, give me the blended. So they're gonna transfer their kids to us and some of those kids we have no control over because they live in our district. Some people would say, hey, let's get our kids back. At what cost? So there are a whole lot of factors that have to be explored, but I can tell you, as a former teacher, I would not want to meet my kid for the first time, have never had the pleasure of knowing him or his family in a virtual situation. I would at least have something.
You know, um when I look at the data that you shared with us earlier and we have thirty-nine percent of the parents who answer, has a pretty good response in the um survey are hesitant to, with sending their kids to school five days a week and a thirty percent are hesitant um about sending them on the bus. I wonder, my, I wonder what would make them comfortable or what would make them not? You know, is there, you know, like, so what would make, what what would make you not hesitate? Because that gives you an idea, if they say, you know, that's, you know, if you add the, the hesitant plus the would not, you know, that's kinda giving us an indicator of, you know, what the appetite of our community might be. But go ahead, Mr. Smith.
This, this, that's a good point that you raised. Because one of the things that we did is, uh, we made some calls to some of the parents, and we asked them to, if, if you're hesitant, what would be your factor to hesitate? And they had very, very honest answers. And basically it was like, I'd like to see it in progress, I'd like to see how it works. He'd come home every day and he doesn't have a virus, okay? And so they're looking for operational situations, and I'm sure, um, at the Oaks, those parents are gonna be looking for operational situations when they come back. How do you know your plan worked? Everybody followed the plan. How do we know the plan worked? There were no other kids contacting the virus, we don't know. So I, parents would be looking for, how good is your plan based on your deliverable? Can you do what you say you're going to do? I can tell you the one thing that we, we, we will be able to do, that we said we would, we would do. If we go with, based on the board's recommendation, the A B or the in-person, we would be very, very, very ready to go to a virtual experience within the next day. That's the guarantee, because we would have to. So based on what happens with the CDC, their, their attitude is, how nimble can you be? How quickly can you convert your system? And that would be part of our professional development, of how quickly you can convert your system to a virtual experience after you've tried it. And then the second part is, if things begin to dissipate, do you come back and try it again? How often do you give this experience that time?
So, Mr. Smith, uh, my, my question, or my concern is not being critical of the team. Uh, it's just that it, it's not given in a lot of detail. So, that leaves questions for me about what might, what, what holes will be filled, and um, that's all. And so, I wasn't being critical of your team.
Doc, here's the point, first of all, we live on, we, this is, this is how we operate in the district, all right? We create and you guys critique, that's what happens, that's part of life. And we don't look at it as a critical situation, we look at it as people asking questions. I would prefer a thousand questions coming to me than for people to get out in the community, and now they're asking questions that people who have no real skin in the game. So I appreciate the questions. And uh, you know, Doc, you worked with me for a long time, Dr. Johnson. You know, the more questions, the better it is for me. I don't look at it that way. I look at it as, you have been thinking about the process, where can we fill in the gaps in order to make these pro- these plans very comprehensive? Because the parents are gonna wanna know, why did you choose what you chose? And we have to be ready to answer that question. So, Doc, for everybody on the board, I don't look at it as you're challenging what work's been done. You're asking questions so we can make sure the work does not have holes in it. That's the whole objective, and we welcome that.
And, and one thing, uh, I, I can say, uh, Mr. Smith, uh, with your team, you, you would rather us pound you with questions so that you can go and take that back to your team and get it all ironed out. So that's one thing I, I, I can say that, um, the, the time that I've worked with you, that that's one of the things that you um, want us to do, you know, is to pound you with questions and challenging things so that you can, because you wanna be able to answer all of the questions.
Right, but, but Derek, you should be coming up with, what are questions that we're going to ask? Because remember, you have an ear for the community. They're talking to you guys about a variety of things, and you see it from both sides of the coin. You're that board member, but you're also that parent. You're that board member, but you're also the community advocate. So your questions have to be compelling, they have to be thought-provocative, and we have to be able to say, this is why we're making the decision, because we thought about all of these things in, in place. I would hate for people to agree with any of these plans without challenging, challenging them. I welcome the challenge, let's see if we can beat it.
Okay, are there any other um, uh, questions? Mr. Smith, is this something that we can go into executive session to talk about again, or is this gonna be our last time to review this?
No, 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 we don't, we can't go into it, but Doc, this is what I think, this is what I think should happen. Um, number one, uh, we have something called airtime with uh, Waycross. I think this thing, because you guys would have had a chance to look at it, you would have had a chance to send me emails saying, hey, Sue, did you think about this, did you think about this? I have a chance to send information back, and basically, in a regular board meeting, this should be a conversation. So the public knows how we arrived at our decision. It shouldn't be in an executive session, it should be out front. Because this, this particular decision, uh, based on COVID nineteen, uh, opening schools, there is no executive session order that would take this place. Meaning there's no way to call executive session for this, because it does not apply.
Okay, okay, I was just wondering if there, we're gonna have another opportunity to talk about it in some other way. I mean, I don't mind, you know, talking about it on Waycross, but I just wanna be able to, once everybody reads all the documents, talk about it again, you know, before, you know, we have to vote on it, that's
Yeah, one, and one, one other piece, uh, as the, as the people worked on these documents, uh, the different members of the team, not one time did the team become um, agitated, uh, disrespectful, annoyed with another member's suggestions or ideas. So I am, I, I applaud the team for, for taking this challenge, because it's huge. And it's not of which ideas is the one that we're going to select, it's which one's best for the kids.
And uh, Mr. Smith, when, when I read through this, is this the final document that you're giving us to decide on? Or aren't you guys doing something that you're gonna give us like a A, B, C, and we decide on one of those three?
Well, basically you have it, I'm just waiting for you to give feedback on it, these are drafts, uh, Mr. McGowan.
Okay.
Okay, well, if there's uh, nothing else on uh, on those, uh, on that, uh, we can move on to our next uh, uh, item on the agenda, which is um, to look at the committee reports. And I, as far as I know, we didn't have, haven't had anything with student achievement, so there's nothing to report. But um, what about financial or community engagement? I would say community engagement, the whole thing with the warrior, you know, where that's what's on the table for all of us as a board, but
And the survey, and the survey where it talks about school, yes, ma'am.
And the survey, so uh, financial, or, uh, Jeff, is there anything from the financial?
Nothing with F A C going on right now.
Okay, and um, and nothing with the, the S A C at this point, either.
I think what we're doing right now is S A C. The whole thing is S A C.
Yes, it is.
Right, but that's already documented, and we're gonna have to work with that some more. The other thing is the community engagement, we have the uh, piece that we're going to continue to look at uh, and send Mr. Smith questions by Friday, uh, July the seventeenth, uh, so that we can uh, decide whether, um, you, you know, so that he can put together a survey and uh, decide how to move forward there. And uh, political ju- uh, liaison, I didn't have anything, Mr. Smith, do you have anything that you want to share with us? You're on mute.
Yeah, the only thing, Doc, is, uh, I think one member of the board talked about the um, CDC and all of the recommendations about opening school, they are huge. And um, I don't wanna confuse the public where uh, we have been giving a pass for third-grade guarantee and retaining kids. Because if you keep doing that, you have created an illiterate society of people. Because you've given them passes without any accountability, and that scares me more than any COVID out there. Because now you've talked about moving this kid on without any accountability, and imagine, he's done more work this year than he did the next year, and then he doesn't make it. Or the state comes back and say, now we're counting third-grade guarantee again. Oh, it's coming back.
Oh, yeah.
And it's our responsibility to prepare our kids for it and not using as a short sale feeling they won't ever be put in a situation.
Right, right.
Mr. Birdy, give uh, Mr. uh, Snyder a, a message for me. I know he's happy that he does not have athletics in his school.
He probably is, but I have not had that conversation with him.
Okay.
All right, um, then we will uh, move on then to the next uh, next item, which is our executive session. And board, there is a need for an executive session tonight, so I will entertain a motion at this time.
Dr. Johnson, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for negotiating purposes.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been motion and seconded, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
The Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mrs. John, Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. Discuss at this time, uh, we will bring it to a close. Is there anyone that, uh, any board member would like to have any remarks at this time?
Dr. Johnson, we need a roll after executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm always ahead of myself, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Present. Or aye?
I was present. You're here.
Not present.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Present.
Uh, Dr. Johnson?
Uh, uh, present, see, now my mind is gone.
See, they messed me up, I didn't know what to say, so I'm sorry, I started out with the I stuff, present, I, okay.
All right, very good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Now, does anybody have any um, uh, final remarks that they would like to say before we end this work session? Well, I appreciate you all for, um, you know, putting your mind to this work tonight. And um, uh, if no one else has anything, this would be the end of our work session for Monday, July the thirteenth, the Wittenwood City School Board of Education, and we are officially dismissed.